Welcome to this forum for candidates competing in the race for Benton County Commissioner, Position Three. This online program is co-hosted by the Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP and the League of Women Voters of Corvallis. My name is John Phillips the Fourth, and I serve as the Second Vice President of the Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP. Our organization has been active in this community since 1971. Our members are of diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds, working as advocates, united in the fight to end racial inequality for all Americans. A nonpartisan organization, we are proud to co-sponsor this event to better inform Corvallis voters of key issues of the 2024 Benton County Commissioners' election. We convey our thanks to the candidates for participating in this forum and to all candidates on the 2024 ballot who serve the values and ideals of American democracy. I am pleased to be joined by Annette Mills as our co-moderator for this session. Annette, if you would like to show, to share, excuse me, a few words.
Certainly. Thank you, John. My name is Annette Mills, and I serve as the First Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Corvallis. The League of Women Voters of Corvallis is a nonpartisan advocacy and education organization, working to defend our democracy and engage our community on the issues that matter most to them. I encourage those listening to this forum to seek out additional information and get involved with the League and the NAACP in our community. And now, John?
All right. I'd like to welcome the candidates Nancy Wise, Keith Limkey, and James Dashill to this candidate forum. To open this discussion, we're going to ask each of you to take two minutes to introduce yourself to the voters watching this recording and share why you are running for the seat of Benton County Commissioner. We will start with James, then move on to Keith, and then we will end with Nancy. So, James, go ahead and take it away.
Excellent. Hello, I'm James Dashill. I'm the Green Party candidate for Benton County Commissioner. I'm new to politics, and I feel like it's my part as a citizen to engage with the political system at a local level. Being a part of the Green Party means that I stand for grassroots democracy and the mission to reshape our environmental policy for America's future.
All right, excellent. Keith, you're up. You're muted.
That's probably a good thing. Hi, I'm Keith Limkey. I'm running as a Republican candidate. Up until now, it was the non-Democrat side, but we have one from the Green Party. That's good. I'm a retired military officer, and after retirement, spent 14 years trying to build the government in Afghanistan. I'm married to my partner for 38 years. We have four wonderful kids, all lived, done, grown up in this area. I'm also for grassroots, trained liberal. I had a very liberal education at West Point, believe it or not, with engineering, science, history, Russian management, psychology, leadership, macro and micro economics, and philosophy. Solved very complex problems all over the world, eight different countries, four different wars. And so I kind of understand how to solve complex socioeconomic and political issues, and this county is going to have a bunch of them. Always been accountable for my responsibilities and hold those around me accountable, and will always promise that. And the reason I'm running is I decided to run because I fear for the health and welfare of our citizens, particularly of 20% poverty, small businesses, the rural agriculture communities, the communities of color, which are the most significant single demographic increase of our county population over the last 20 years, households making less than 70K a year, and those with mental health problems. They're all face broad range of complex problems, and they need leadership focused on all of them, and I think I can provide that leadership. So, thank you very much.
All right, Keith, thank you. Nancy, you're up.
Greetings. I'm Nancy Wise. I am your current Position Three Benton County Commissioner and the Democrat running for reelection. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the NAACP for hosting. Thank you to everyone who's taking the time to watch this and educate yourselves. And thank you to my opponents for running. I truly believe that contested elections are better for the people, and it makes us all work harder. Before becoming a Benton County Commissioner, I served two terms on the Corvallis City Council. I have served on numerous boards and commissions. I served on the Benton County Budget Committee and the Planning Commission. And as part of my job as a commissioner, I serve on more than 22 liaison board commission roles. The last four years have gone by quickly, but I am proud of the work that the county has done and the momentum that I've built as a commissioner, and I would love nothing more than to continue that momentum into the next four years. My focus areas for the next four years include homelessness, mental health, planning, and climate and environmental justice. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that introduction from each of you. We will now turn towards a list of questions for all candidates to respond to. These questions have been provided to candidates in advance, and we are asking candidates to provide up to two-minute responses to each question. For our first question, we will go in the order of Keith first, then Nancy, and then James. So, Keith, what do you see as the biggest issues facing the county in the next five years, and how do you propose to tackle those issues?
Yeah, I'm only could cover, cover two. Economy in the landfill, our budget right now relies on about one-third federal grants, taxes and fees, and high interest bonds. And the problem is, is that with bricks and high interest rates, you know, the dependence on the federal state grants are going to go away, which means we got to offset those, those monies from somewhere. Meanwhile, energy companies are really fees 25% this year, and the governor's probably going to ask for a price and gas increase to cover 35 billion for DOT. Our people can't afford all this. I mean, knocking on doors, the folks are saying, I pay, I'm paying enough. And oh, by the way, this goes into all those other issues we'll cover today in this, this thing. And that's how, the money is what it takes to be able to help solve some of these issues. So, in the last 20 years, number of businesses in the county has only increased 4%, while the population's grown 34%. So, the taxes are going to go to individuals. It's not going to go to enlarged business tax base. It's not going to go to more people getting higher-paying jobs. It's going to go to individuals. And so, the problem is, is we got to figure out a way to get tax or money infusion in to offset those costs of those, those grants that are probably going to reduce in size. Coffin Butte landfill, I will help stop land, the landfill expansion, make this a statewide issue. Is an emergent environmental and health catastrophe that has been continually expanding since 47, despite the people saying they wanted to stop it five times. We are the dumping ground for 16 counties and one from the state of Washington, making this a state issue. We need to use modern methods and scientific approaches, deal with the state's trash, and stop being the convenient dumping ground for half the state. It's time to force the state and all of our partners around us to address the problems, as opposed to just us taking it. We need a regional operation from Oslo and Stockholm, Sweden, and I'd be more than happy to provide the leadership to do that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Nancy, what do you see as the biggest issues facing the county in the next five years, and how do you propose to tackle those issues?
Well, some of the biggest issues, I think, are going to be homelessness, mental health, behavioral health, which also incorporates drug use and climate, which is why my goals for the next four years are centered around those issues. We need to continue working with community partners to move forward with additional recommendations from the Home Opportunity Planning and Equity Advisory Board, the HOPE Board, and our Coordinated Homeless Response Office. These things are an issue, and we know that they can get worse. So, we need to update all of our plans and make sure that we are adequately posed to address them. Mental health, we have made really great strides with that already, but there are still gaps. We need to work on filling those gaps. We have increased our staff by several FTE in the, in the Health Department, and those are all funded by state and federal funding. So, it is not an increased dollar amount to Benton County property taxpayers. Climate and environmental justice, it's time for the county to update that plan. When the county first updated it, it was the first round of groups and organizations really identifying that everyone needs to come together and make a plan to try to address it. And so, the county just sort of went with a boilerplate. This is the best we know how to do plan. And now that we know a little more, I think it's time to update it.
All right. Thank you. And James, what do you see as the biggest issues facing the county in the next five years, and how do you propose to tackle those issues?
Sure. So, some of the biggest issues, the late, the expansion of the landfill. With our partner Republic Services, Coffin Butte landfill and its expansion is an issue that many citizens in Benton County feel strongly about. The future of this landfill will be an issue affecting the county for decades to come. Regardless of the immediate future of this site, I feel that we should be examining options in the eastern area of the state for future waste needs that are not addressable by composting, recycling, or recovery. It's time to look to the future and, and really plan, you know, because it'll take, it could take years and years for us to find a site that, that would really be sustainable for, for Oregon. Also, the unhoused and mentally or behaviorally ill citizens of Benton County need care, and I'll continue the work being done with citizen groups and our public health staff to make effective change. The cost of living in Benton County, especially from a housing standpoint, is a concern. Advocating and assisting our municipalities in construction of affordable housing is a top priority. Climate change and the ongoing effects to our ecosystem and the public health of our citizens will be a very important factor in the coming years. I'll do my best to strengthen efforts that our county is undertaking to reduce our carbon footprint and to help implement a new sustainable materials management plan that will reduce our contributions to climate change.
All right. Thank you. And John will introduce the next question.
Excellent. Thank you, Annette. All right, for this, these questions, the order will be Nancy, James, and Keith, and I'll repeat that after I'm done with the questions. What plans would you propose to increase services to our community in support of mental health and those struggling with addiction? Is additional funding needed? If so, what funding source is available?
Thank you. So, as I mentioned, we have made some strides recently in this department. The county is standing up our Mental Health Crisis Center downtown Corvallis. That's been a heavy lift, but I've supported that. It's going to be coming online in 2025. I'm excited for that. We are working on our deflection program, which is going to fill a needed gap, and that funding is coming from the state. And as I previously mentioned, we do receive state and federal funding. We receive funding from the Oregon Health Authority, operating grants for public health and behavioral health. We receive money from the Department of Health and Human Services, and we can build insurance. So, we have the ability to, we have the funding streams, and we have the ability to work with those partners to increase funding streams. It's just about having the will and the ability to stand up additional items. So, something for the future to consider a secure residential treatment facility. The county was successful in getting a grant for that, but unfortunately, because the jail bond didn't pass, the grant was not enough, because we were going to be using money for that site development for that, as part of that project. So, we know that the state is behind us there. We know that we can be successful. It's just a matter of getting all the ducks in the row.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. James, what plans would you propose to increase services to our community in support of mental health and those struggling with addiction? Are, is funding needed, and if so, funding sources available?
Right. So, like Nancy was saying, the new crisis center is coming online in 2025. I think that's going to be great for people who are, who are coping with mental health problems and, and addiction problems. As well, our current Benton County Behavioral Services are steps in making sure that our citizens coping with mental illness and addiction have support. This type of care, though, unfortunately, is a high demand all across the USA and in Oregon. It's expensive, and we have a shortage in qualified counselors. Luckily, we have many wonderful citizens and nonprofit groups that are working hard to make a difference in Benton County every day. And I would support our partnerships with organizations like Pathfinder Clubhouse and Corvallis Housing First. And I would work with county staff to strengthen our efforts, find funding grants, and share our resources with these types of organizations. I truly believe that the citizens of Benton County need to come together on this issue and, you know, employ their talent, treasure, and time as much as possible.
Excellent. Thank you. Keith, what plans would you use, or would you propose to increase services to our community in support of mental health and those struggling with addiction? Is additional funding needed? If so, what funding source is available? You're muted.
First of all, sustain the work that's been done. It's been good work, but the problem is it's not going to be enough. You know, to house 3,000 homeless people is about $230 million. You're not going to get all the funds to do that. So, you need to get infusion of money from elsewhere as well. And so, the way you do that is you got to get money from not only grants, but build the economy, like what I was talking about with an E corridor and, and some other issues I'll talk about a little bit later. But the, on a very practical terms, we need to be able to validate people on the street, diagnose them with a psychiatrist, which we had a problem because we couldn't get housing form and, and pay and all that. And then, once you get those guys, you got to get them categorized. We have like 19 facility or different organizations within Corvallis and nine different houses where folks can stay. And then, the different counties have about the same number, and so we've got to be able to use those different resources and figure out their specific capabilities, and then start working based on the diagnosis, what person goes to where and what program is best for. I mean, we've got to get down to that resolution. And it's really complicated because all the monies changes around. And then the third is sustain all that, and we already talked about the money problems. The last thing is how much more money? I don't know. We, one-third of our budget goes into this already. One-third of the man-hours goes into this already. So, the issue then becomes where is, where's the money going to, and how's it being used, and how's that being audited? I think we need to look at that very closely as we try to figure out how we're going to switch monies to be able to facilitate that structure of a program to get down to that level of detail in the handling of these patients. And I, until we do that, we're just kind of throwing money at different agencies and nonprofits, and until we can get down to the resiliency where we can manage it to the specificity of the individual, I don't think we're going to be where we want to be. So, that's what I would work with, with all those different community programs and, 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 and funding sources, and plus, try to get business involved in this. All right. Be nice to have employment. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, guys. And I don't know, Annette, if we told them that. So, when one of us puts our hand up, then that means you've reached your two minutes. So, if we didn't say that before, we apologize. Thank you, Nancy, James, and Keith for your answers for that question.
All right. Next question. The order is going to be James, then Keith, then Nancy, and the question is, would you commit to ensuring Benton County has a functioning bias response program? What specific steps are needed to assure that incidents of racial bias are being documented and addressed in our county? James?
Okay. So, the issue of bias and developing programs to respond to it's in, within Benton County is a complex issue. We do have resources, like the Oregon Department of Justice Bias Response Hotline, that are already in place to help those who feel like they've experienced direct bias, microaggressions, and so forth. I do support fostering a culture of open communication in Benton County staff and the citizenry of Benton County to examine bias and to celebrate those whose race, socioeconomic situation, religion, and sexuality make them a target of bias incidents.
All right. Thank you. Let me repeat the question for you, Keith. Would you commit to ensuring Benton County has a functioning bias response program? What specific steps are needed to assure that incidents of racial bias are being documented and addressed in our county? And please unmute yourself.
I'm too small of a screen. Yeah, so, my take on this, so I read the Oregon Cascades Council of Governments Regional Bias Feasibility, including the Oregon Department of Justice Program. And to me, right now, it's probably adequate, which is basically what that feasibility study said. The problem is, you know, if you look at it, in 2020, we had 136 calls through that process about Benton and 45 in 2021, and I don't know if that's because people lost track of it, just didn't know about it, if there's a problem, if there isn't a problem. I just don't know. I don't know what I don't know. And before you throw resources at, I want to define what the problem is. And so, I, I think a few organizations have already started the process, like Oregon State has a, already has a program set up. So does, I think, the school district. So, I'd like to go and study what they have and what they're doing and try to figure out where we are on it, to figure out what the problem is, if there is a problem, or if it's probably adequate. I don't think, I mean, tracking bias, the other side of this is I really don't know where the end state of this is. Right now, it is you're finding people who feel that they have been somehow affected, and so that we can get them help in mental health and things like that. And I'm all for that. It's good governance to me. And also, that communications is good govern, all the steps in that, that study, there were 12 of them I would adopt because they're just good governance. But on the end state of that, I don't know where we're trying to get to, and it's kind of hard to, to outline a path and plan a path if you haven't committed to what the end state's going to be. And so, I, I, I commit to the governance of it and to the, and to the, I guess, the intent of it, and what they're trying to do as far as eradicating bias. But I am a little hesitant in jumping full-fledged into a program that I really don't know what the end state is.
All right. Thank you. Nancy, would you commit to ensuring Benton County has a functioning bias response program? What specific steps are needed to assure that incidents of racial bias are being documented and addressed in our county?
I absolutely would. And when the city of Corvallis first undertook this, this goal of trying to stand one up, I was on the council and voted yes to move forward with it. Somewhere right in the middle of it, COVID hit. I was elected to the commission, so I had very little sort of control or oversight. They did let me come in and sit through one meeting with Soul Force, which was very educational. I think, you know, I'm not sure the COG was the right place to put this. And I understand the, the concerns that we had with COVID, but it really needs to have ownership, and I think the county is a great place to put that. We have been in the process of revamping our EDI Coordinator position. The Board of Commissioners, previous to my tenure, had set aside money for that, hired somebody, but it wasn't well fleshed out, and our people that we've had in that role, I don't think have felt successful because they're not entirely sure what their job is. So, we have worked with consultants to fix that problem. So, once we get a new coordinator in that role, I think this would be a great project for them to tackle. I, we heard from the community last time that they did not want to just rely on the state. Our community wanted to have something local, and that's, maybe that's changed, maybe it hasn't. I would definitely reach out to the communities of color and seek their input, because I am a middle-aged white lady, so I do not have the same experiences that they do. And so, we would need to really listen to their voices. I think looking at the data from the state is a great place to start, and also lessons learned, and then moving on from there.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna pass it back to John.
All right. Thank you. For this question, the order will be Keith, and then Nancy, and then James. All right, Keith, here's the question. The 2023 Climate and Health Adaptation Plan of Lincoln and Benton Counties spells out adaptation actions to strengthen public health in the face of a changing climate. What actions do you support in advancing public health in a changing climate? And do you support the Climate and Health Adaptation Plan?
Uh, yeah, I do, actually. Though, I mean, there's some parts of it like that, the problem with the plan overall is the people that we're involved with, that I think we need to get more people from the, the private sector. All I ever see is public sector folks in any of these plans, and, and the problem is, is that there's a lot on the private sector as well that needs to be inputted on them. And so, it comes from one perspective and not multiple perspectives. So, there's not really a balance. But, you know, if you look at it, the good, it's, if you look at the principles of the plan, it's just, once again, it's good governance. These, these steps should be done in every issue to include this issue. I also think, though, that we make a lot of plans, and this thing's like 55 pages. I think we need to get a little bit more into the details. For instance, we know exactly how many, we know by the Census Bureau how many families of color are in poverty. Why don't we know where exactly where they all live and already start acting on it? I mean, we make all these plans and monies, and this is a great plan, but it doesn't get into the specific, specific actions that need to be accomplished with deadlines, and I think that's the next level we need to get to. And I don't see it. And so, I do support the overall thing, but now I want to get into the specificity of it, and then start tasking people, and then hold them accountable for those actions. The other part of that plan is it's not working. I mean, I live out here by Coffin Butte, and I breathe in the methane, and within this plan, there's certain things that are supposed to happen. Well, we're focused on global warming and all that, and that's, that's kind of wonderful. But there's, there's immediate health concerns now to our community that this plan, even though it's a wonderful plan, it hasn't really been executed to fulfill. So, I think we need to start executing pieces of this and actually follow on our own guidance and our own plan. So, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Nancy, the 2023 Climate and Health Adaptation Plan of Lincoln and Benton Counties spells out adaptation actions to strengthen public health in the face of a changing climate. What actions do you support in advancing public health in a changing climate? And do you support the Climate and Health Adaptation Plan?
Thank you. Yes, I absolutely support this. It has been an undertaking by Benton County and Lincoln County. Very important work. At its core, I would say the heart or the, the foundation of this plan is all about a standardized, a standardized use of an equity framework and acknowledging that climate change does not impact all people equally. Those disproportionately affected include children, adults 65 and older, pregnant individuals, socially isolated, geographically isolated folks, people with chronic health issues, people of color, people who work outdoors. And the, the reason that a lot of action hasn't been taken yet is because, number one, this plan hasn't been around for very long. But number two, it's based on building relationships and leveraging existing relationships to build trust with culturally specific organizations. We need to gain their trust and listen to them, and have that means for communication back and forth. Climate, climate impacts can be everything from increased allergies, respiratory disease. When temperatures get too hot, some people act out more violently. Vector disease goes up, mental health, heat-related incidents. All of that is addressed in different ways. The good news, I think, is that we do have a group or a coordinator a coordinator that is, has, is starting with the implementation. So this plan is not just sitting on the shelf. We are starting to move forward with it. And I think if you're looking for specific actions, things like resiliency hubs, making sure that we have cooling and warming shelters. I'm sorry, was that my time?
Yeah, that was your time. Yeah, no worries. You're okay. All right, James, the 2023 Climate and Health Adaptation Plan of Lincoln and Benton Counties spells out adaptation actions, excuse me, to strengthen public health in the face of a changing climate. What actions do you support in advancing public health in a changing climate? And do you support the Climate and Health Adaptation Plan?
Yes, I do support the Climate and Health Adaptation Plan. I personally think that, uh, like everybody else on this panel, the public health engagement, especially to our most vulnerable citizens, is going to be really important as we experience the ongoing results of climate change. We are and should continue to reduce our carbon emissions as well as implement a successful, sustainable materials management plan for a more sustainable future of Benton County. This is one of the issues that I care most about. And I support education initiatives for Benton County so that people are aware of our adaptation actions as well as to assure citizens that if we pay attention to this crisis and give it the respect and even the sacrifices that it demands, that we'll all be better off.
Okay, thank you, Keith, Nancy, and James for those answers.
All right, moving on to the next question, number five. Affordable housing is a critical issue. What can Benton County do to collaborate with the city of Corvallis and other cities and communities to improve on prior practices? How do urban growth boundary requirements aid and/or interfere with needed actions? And that for this question, we'll go in order of Nancy, then James, then Keith. Nancy?
Yes, so I think there's a lot of work to be done with the county and the cities. We've done a little bit of it, but there's definitely room for improvement, and we are now going through the process of voluntary periodic review. We're going to be updating our code in the next year, year and a half. So all this is ripe to move forward. Number one, we need to support the other jurisdictions, the cities, because density goes in cities. It doesn't go out in the rural areas next to working farms. Things like updating the urban fringe management agreements with the cities, aligning our comp plan map zones. Right now, there are spots where on the county's map, it shows one county zoning, which does not equate to the city zoning. That makes it challenging to go to process annexations. The county needs to be a good partner and listen to our cities. One example of that is the city of Adair Village requested a urban growth boundary expansion because they knew that they had a developer coming in. And they were out of room. They need more, more land. And so the county agreed to initiate a legislative process, which was a quicker process. And you asked if urban growth boundaries aid or interfere. In the grand scheme of things, they aid because we need to know what land we're saving for farm and forest. We need to know where we're going to put things. We need to know what land has too much wetlands on it to reasonably be able to build anything on. We need to plan so that we have cities that work, so that we have infrastructure that can reach where people are. We don't want to build any more legacy streets and have those issues. You know, technically, is an urban growth boundary one more step or hurdle to development? Yes, but it also gets us the development that we want and that's good for our community.
All right, thank you. James, affordable housing is a critical issue. What can Benton County do to collaborate with the city of Corvallis and other cities and communities to improve on prior practices? And how do urban growth boundary requirements aid and/or interfere with needed actions?
Right, so, um, I would do my best to aid our leading communities and to bring higher density housing in key areas of those municipalities. I think that there's, there's just areas that are, that are better handled, that are better structured to handle and increase density in Corvallis especially, but even in areas like Philomath, where you would be able to increase density and offer services like transportation and, and scale, and it would make a lot of sense. Urban growth boundaries are designed to reduce sprawl, and historically, our citizens are resistant to sprawl. I think that there's opportunities all over Corvallis and Albany and North Albany and Philomath for new affordable housing, though. The key would be updating our county comprehensive plan. And I would support amassing any resources that the county could offer in planning, zoning, or land use to realize a better housing market for our citizens, and that would be a priority of my office from day one.
Right, thank you. And Keith, affordable housing is a critical issue. What can Benton County do to collaborate with the city of Corvallis and other cities and communities to improve on prior practices? How do urban growth boundary requirements aid and/or interfere with needed actions?
Well, I'm kind of surprised with all these committees. We don't already have the communication between all the different cities within and around the county to cross all the planning, the zone planning from all the different cities. Since we've been doing this business for about 50 years in the county and all the adjacent counties, but, I mean, everybody's trying to do that. And so what they said was the same thing that makes sense. You coordinate with all the different committees. I would do one more thing. I'd invite like some of the private sector into this, like the realtors, some of the entrepreneurs who are trying to build things. We had one here that was trying to build a, a plant like $230 million and 100 high-paying jobs that they finally gave up because they couldn't get the zoning right and the roads right and the infrastructure right. So I think there's a lot of work to be done, but the problem is, is that we need to keep our zoning, we need to set it, plan it, and keep it in place as long as we can so people can build into it. As far as urban growth, you know, coordinate with all the cities, urban growth boundary requirements. Look, it's how you control density, I mean, bottom line. And if you want to, if you want more density, then you, you can, you can use those as tools to help you do that. If you don't, it's tools to prevent it. It goes on the base plan, but we got to really look at our industry, how, how are we going to make money in the future? We can't just continually live off grants and taxes. Eventually, you run out of both. So, you know, that's why I want to E-Corridor in, in, in power, which would be a, a small nuclear reactor. So that would help bring in the monies, and then we could zone, and then we could make these industrial zones worth something. And then all of a sudden, all these other zones mean something to somebody. So, I mean, it all ties together, and this all ties together with, with, with both the urban and the rural communities, particularly here in this county.
All right, thank you. And I'll pass it back to John for question number six.
Thank you, Annette. For this question, the order is going to be James and then Keith and then Nancy. The question is, James, how would you work across jurisdictions to improve services such as transportation and social services?
Right, so, um, so I would meet with our staff in Benton Area Transit to receive counsel and assess any shortcomings or areas that need improvement with our partner transit services. You know, we, we've been working with these folks for a long time, and, and we're always trying to improve our product, I know. Our health department and social service staff likewise would aid me in gathering perspective and helping me to achieve our responsibilities to our citizens with our municipal partners.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Keith, how would you work across jurisdictions to improve services such as transportation and social services?
Uh, work with some of the organizations like the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments, who has a charter to do that with the transportation. Also cross-pollinate our planning committees with the, the the committee, the other county committees and the, and the city and, and town committees. So that you're integrating their, their plans and their zones with our plans and our zones and our roads, and start trying to get ahead of this over about a 15- to 20-year period, and then try to lock it in so people can actually build into it as opposed to having it change from under their feet. I would bring in the realtor organizations, entrepreneurs, and investors, just like before, because those are the guys who are staking the money and looking at what, in the future for, for growth, financial growth of those areas are going to be, which have been kind of left out of the equation up to now, which is why we're kind of where we are right now. And so between those three things, all of a sudden, you're going to get, you're, you're going to get where you're actually helping each other reach their goals between the different municipalities and the different organizations. So, and that includes transportation, social services, so. That's what I'd do.
All right, thank you, Keith. And Nancy, how would you work across jurisdictions to improve services such as transportation and social services?
Thank you. Well, this is a great question because the, the county already does this quite a bit. But acknowledging that, there's always room for improvement. When it comes to transportation, we have our transportation service plan. I was on the Benton County Planning Commission when we adopted that. I was also a city councillor when Corvallis adopted theirs. And so all of these jurisdictions worked in conjunction to make sure that most of the overlap matched up. We also have organizations, Campo, Ambo, it's the Corvallis, the Corvallis area metropolitan planning area and the Albany area metropolitan planning area. And they get funding, they're through the COG. They, they tackle a lot of this regional stuff. As far as social services, we would just be lost if we didn't have Community Services Consortium. They are a tri-county organization. Benton County, Lynn County, and Lincoln County, and all of the commissioners from those three counties make up the board. And they are just crucial to our communities for helping people get connected with services. You know, I, and again, acknowledging that transportation, thousands and thousands of people drive in and out of Benton County every day, so that is, that's a concern. Food insecurity, poverty, that, that stuff doesn't care what side of the county line you're on. It doesn't care what side of the river that you're on. And that's why I think the county does acknowledge that we need to, to partner with the local areas.
All right, excellent. Uh, thank you, Nancy, and thank all three of you. Back to you, Annette.
Thank you. So your final question is, how do you plan to engage with and gather input from your constituents to inform your actions and decisions? And we will start with Keith, then go to Nancy and James. So Nancy, or excuse me, so Keith, you start.
The first thing is, we need to start, we need to change the time of our meetings. I mean, no one can go on Tuesdays at 1:00 if you're going to work. And we want to listen to people who are working for once, other than within our own bubble. And so I think you got to get a time other than that. Also, you got to get out in the community. And I know we have all these committees and all these things, but it's all the same people from nonprofits and from within the government, public sector. We got to start talking to the private sector. They're sick and tired, and they're also running out of money. And so go down, have coffee. So right now, I go down to about five different places around the county and just sit down and talk to people. That would continue. Except it'd become more formalized because it'd be meet with the commissioner at this time at this place. And people say, well, that takes too much time. You got to be in the committee. Well, the problem is, you hear a lot down there. You hear about missed opportunities, you hear about missed opportunities for a chip factory that was going to be south of Corvallis that would prod in a couple hundred jobs. You, uh, missed opportunities for businesses near Monroe that would have brought in some jobs and, and people as well. And so that's how you do it. You get out, you got to have two-way communication. Town halls don't work, it's one way. You need two ways. You need to be listening to what they're talking about, who, what, when, where, and why. It's got to be routine. Probably hit each town at least once a week, the big five. Monroe, Adair, North Albany, and then Corvallis and a couple places in Philomath. That's how I do it. And you take the time to do it, and you have to do it, even if it's at night, so.
Thank you, Keith. All right, Nancy, how do you plan to engage with and gather input from your constituents to inform your actions and decisions?
Well, what I have found works well is showing up. You have to show up. Community meetings, organization, open houses, city council meetings. I regularly, regularly attend the Adair Village City Council meetings, Philomath, Monroe. Getting out there, you know, talking to the people. And I would disagree that they're all the same people. Across Benton County, there are several different communities, and they all have their own sort of volunteers. They all have their own way of doing things. And it's amazing how many different and amazing people that you can meet by getting out there and just showing up when you're invited. You know, in addition, the county I think is good at trying to get information out. We have a newsletter that reaches more people than the Gazette Times does. We have our socials that we blast everything out onto. I do have my personal, or it's my, it's my Nancy Wise for Benton County Facebook page. And I would invite anyone to go look at it because most of the time when I'm at these events, I will check in. And you can go down and see over the years where I've actually gone and what I've done. Things like the Philomath Chamber, the Corvallis Chamber, I mean, those, that makeup really is different than, you know, the Hope Board or some of these other commissions. So showing up is key. I would also say I'm always open. If people have ideas, if people want to reach out to me, please do so. I want to hear from you. It's my job to represent the people, and so I really do want to know what people are thinking.
Thank you, Nancy. And finally, James, how do you plan to engage with and gather input from your constituents to inform your actions and decisions?
Right, so, um, so, yeah, I plan to have a grassroots democracy as a focus in my political career. I want to make sure that people know that I'm working for them and for future generations of Benton County citizens. It's going to be something that I would talk about very often. So that they would know that I'm available, I'm ready to listen to them, and that I would be more than happy to, to entertain, you know, whatever ideas they would have. We have wonderful citizenry in Benton County, and I would like to share with the, you know, Keith and also Gabe Shepard has talked about this, making meetings more accessible. I do think that there's definitely a good place for a Tuesday, you know, 9:00 in the morning or 1:00 meeting because that's when staff is available, and that's important. Staff needs to know that their, their time is valuable, and we can't expect them to always, you know, you know, show up on a weekend or, or a night. But I, I do support the idea of there being at least once a month, some type of meeting. It wouldn't necessarily be that staff would be there all the time, but that all the commissioners would be there. And it would be open for, you know, citizens just to come and voice their concerns. You know, we might not have a lot of PowerPoint presentations or anything like that going on, and we might not talk about, you know, hard budget numbers. But we would get a lot of, you know, constructive discourse going, and I, I think it's a good thing. I think people would appreciate it. Give them a chance to go down to the, you know, to the county building down there and, you know, hang out, do, do whatever. So, and then, of course, you know, I'd be always available via phone or social media as an elected representative for people. Love people, yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you, James. All right, and back to John.
Okay, so you guys made it through all seven questions, and we are getting toward the end of our forum, so. Now you guys will have a chance, one and a half minutes, so one minute and 30 seconds to provide a final statement. Let people know who are watching why they should choose you. So we are going to begin with Nancy.
Thank you. As I said, I feel like I have a good momentum from the past four years, and I would like to continue that into the next four years with a focus on homelessness, mental health, planning, and climate and environmental justice. I do have several endorsements that I'm proud of. I've been endorsed by Congresswoman Val Hoyle, Senator Sarah Gelsner Bluen, Representative Dan Rayfield. I've been endorsed by the mayors of Corvallis, Philomath, Adair Village, Monroe, and Albany. And I have also been endorsed by the Oregon League of Conservation Voters. Um, and I would just ask that you consider voting for me first. We do have ranked choice voting. So, even if you do decide to vote for one of my, um, competitors, feel free to vote for me second. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Nancy. James, you are next.
Okay, so, um, first of all, I wanted to, um, express my gratitude, uh, to the League of Women Voters and to the NCAA, uh, NAACP for hosting this forum. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say to people out there, um, you know, uh, two-party politics in America is, uh, something that we should be working to, to not end, but definitely, uh, alter the course of, uh, you know, third-party politics are always a good thing. The Green Party is a great organization. Um, and my perspective, uh, is grassroots democracy is something that's very important. That's why I'm running. So, politics are all about the people of Benton County and our relationships with our community and our visions for the future. I'm looking forward to shaping Benton County with support of, uh, citizens, with, with the support of citizens like you. So, um, please visit my website, james-dashill.net. And, um, like Nancy was saying, we do have ranked choice voting in this election, so please use that, um, you know, um, uh, make sure that your choices are reflective of your ideals and your values and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, James. And Keith, we end with you.
I'll get this straight, one of these times. Uh, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and also the NAACP. So, look, you looked at three different options here. We have all these programs. We want to, to, you know, to help vote the mental health program, um, the housing programs, the development programs and all that. The problem is, we have to talk about the financial capability of doing that. And right now, there's only one candidate talking about that. I want an E corridor where we bring in e-transportation and we've become a center of excellence for some kind of a green industry here. I want a nuclear power because our power, we're going to go into power negative next year within this state. All the companies are saying it's open press. They're going to raise the price so less people use electricity. The only people that'll use less electricity are the poor people. Okay, that's who gets hurt when we go into that type of environment. So, we got to start looking at taking care of those people who aren't going to be able to have the money and the benefit to have or buy their way out of the, the issues. And so, there's only one candidate looking that way. So, you can, you can stay the same. You can stay status quo and hopefully continue getting the federal grants and the state grants to keep these programs rolling along at a cap. Or you can look at ways that we can grow a little bit, bring in money and give some hope to our young kids that they can stay in the, in, in the county and grow and have a profession and have their families here and we're helping all those other systems. Your choice. Thanks.
All right, Keith, thank you. And then we will end the evening with remarks from Annette. Take it away.
All right, well, thank you, Benton County Commissioner candidates Nancy Wise, Keith Lemke and James Dashill for joining this lively discussion and for sharing your interest in taking a seat on the commission. To all watching, on behalf of the Lynn Benton Branch of the NAACP and the League of Women Voters of Corvallis, thank you for listening in. Remember, please, talk to your friends, neighbors and family members about voting in this general election. Thank you again and have a great evening.
Thank you.